A lot of people at that one as well.
Same people, same, yeah, yeah.
With very fancy presentations.
Yeah.
People?
Yeah, several.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, they were pretty much, pretty much the same.
Well thought out, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I was applauding the neighbors, very well prepared and articulate.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah, I mean, it's good that they. That guy buys a house when there's ten feet from the road.
Did you rent a car or did you just drive out?
I rented a car. I rented a car.
For sure.
He asked questions.
Yeah, what do you see has?
Is that the new big screen there?
Yes.
Yes.
Somebody in the business?
Yep, all set? Jeremy, you're good to go?
I'm ready.
Good. Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, October ninth Planning Commission meeting to order. Would everybody like to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Our recorder is absent tonight, so I'll just do a quick statement of who's here. We have Commissioners Mehdi, Civilay, Taylor, Grody, Farr, and Sherwood, and absent tonight are Kirk.
What is here?
Oh, oh, all right, there he is.
Late.
Yep, yep, I knew you'd be here. And absent are Kirk, Piper, and Weber. Good evening.
Evening.
The first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any comments about the agenda or anything? If not, I'll take a motion of approval for that.
So move.
So moved by Commissioner Grody, do I have a second? Thank you by Mr. Commissioner Taylor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was way back on Monday, August 28th, 2023. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review those minutes. Any comments or changes needed on that set of minutes? Okay, not seeing any, I'll take a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve the Planning Commission's meeting minutes dated August 28th, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take Commissioner Mehdi on that one, close call by her. Good, well, we have one public hearing this evening.
Sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner Mehdi.
I seconded it, but we did not vote.
My apologies. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. We're ready to move on. Tonight, we have one public hearing for Mr. Carwash. This is a request for a PUD concept plan review on 1.23 acres, a PUD district review with waivers on 1.23 acres, and a site plan review on 1.23 acres. I think I'll ask the applicant to come up and if they want to make a presentation to the commission, that would be great. If you have any words, if not, you don't have to, we can, okay, good. And if you could introduce yourself with your name, I would appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Paraj Matharu, I'm with the Mr. Carwash Development Team, coming in from Tucson, Arizona, at HQ.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, we're here today because we have a site located on corner of Flying Cloud and Crystal View. And you can see our proposed car wash right there. So that's a rendering done by one of our architectural partners, showing ideally what our site will look like, so. Want to introduce our team as well, so I've already introduced myself. Behind me, I have Luke Kitley, Director of Operations in the Minnesota area, Eli Abnett, Amanda Thomas, Benjamin Myers, all with our civil engineering group, IHG Incorporated. Andrea Rend could not be here for tonight. And I just want to give a quick little introduction to Mr. Carwash. So, we're the only publicly traded car wash and national car wash in the country, which makes us very prideful for our name and our brand. Recently, we actually also hit 2 million subscribers nationwide, so we're also very excited about hitting that milestone as well. Currently, we have about 25 locations across Minnesota, and we do have an existing location here in Eden Prairie, and we're looking forward to upgrading our services with a nice, brand-new, shiny, larger building for all of you. So, currently, at our existing location, we only recycle about 10% of our water, which in this day and age, we understand that water conservation is a really, really hot topic, and we want to make sure that as an industry where the service that we provide is through the use of a large amount of water. Our R&amp;D team has developed a reclaim system, which undergoes three underground tanks, where the water from each vehicle comes in and gets filtered through each tank to be pumped back into our system, and we recycle almost 50% of water from each wash. So going from 10% to 50%, we're not only giving you a much better product, a much better service, we're also understanding that with these concerning environmental times, we have addressed that, and we're continuing to address it with each, each update. So, to give an idea of where the site is, we're the corner of Flying Cloud and Crystal View. That used to be the old location for former Burger King. Currently, the site could definitely use an upgrade, and we're proposing that with our site plan and our project, that we do think that it'll be a positive development in Eden Prairie, especially since we've been here since 1999. We want to make sure that we're continuing that relationship with the community and with what Mr. Carwash stands for as well. So, we're here today for a few reasons. One, we do, we are requesting a building waiver. Currently, we are encroaching within that setback right off of Flying Cloud Drive, and we want to make sure that we do get that waiver to encroach in that setback approved, because it's, we're doing that because we want to improve our circulation in our site. If we were to adhere to the current settings as is, one, the site will be too constrained, which is one of the major complaints we have with our existing location right now. We're at capacity with the amount of cars that we can service there, and we're frequently finding backlogs. We're frequently finding that moving the cars through our current location is going slower than we would like, which means we're not be able to act, we're not able to efficiently handle the capacity that your community is asking for. So with us, moving that building into the setback will allow us enough of a driveway aisle to allow for much easier circulation, to increase the safety of our customers. In addition as well, we've been working with Jeremy and the rest of staff on some of the items about our site plan. So we've taken staff recommendation to move our trash and vacuum enclosure closer to the building, so that way, the first sign that our customers see is not this large CMU block structure, it is the entirety of the site. Seeing the cars come out of the wash, seeing the individuals going into their vacuum, cleaning their cars, and overall, a much better aesthetic view. The second thing we've done as well is adhere to Eden Prairie design guidelines. We understand that the canopy, point-of-sale canopy that we had of our size initially was much too large, creating a visual intrusion to the view corridor that Flying Cloud has done a very good job of preserving. So, we've also decided to downsize our canopy into the more, the smaller manageable that we have at our existing location now. So we still have the ability to protect our equipment, protect our attendant, who is always there to assist customers if they need, but then also, if the customers are paying retail, we have the ability to shield them from, shield them from the weather. Even though about 80% of our customer base in our unlimited wash club subscriber system, we still have retail customers who come by every now and then. In addition as well, we did agree to add the ADA ramps to both of the corners of the property in order to maintain ADA complacency. So, we've also been updating our building elevations to make sure that we're also adhering to city guidelines. We understand that there is a 75% requirement for Class 1 materials, so we have gone through, again, working with Jeremy, to make sure that we have had, adhere to all of those. So we did replace majority of our EPIS and other materials to make sure that we are classifying that within the Class 1. So we've added an additional amount of brick to make sure that we're also keeping the same aesthetics for the entire view corridor. And this is an example right here of the smaller point-of-sale canopies, that you can see instead of one larger structure, it's three smaller structures there, right adjacent to our customer service attendant hut, which is a fully conditioned space, so fully cooled and fully heated. So, we don't have one of our attendants standing outside in the harsh Minnesota weather during 65 days year-round. We have looked in provisions to making sure that we are creating a comfortable environment for them to work in, if they have to leave that in order to assist a customer. And in a minute here, Luke will give up and then explain the operations of our business. And to end it, we're just looking at a few renderings here. So, like I mentioned earlier, we have been here since 1999, and we've been proud to be part of Eden Prairie's community, and in order to keep the relationship going and to provide for our customer base, which as a retail business, without customers, we are nothing. So, we want to make sure that we're upgrading the service. We're giving you a brand-new, ground-up construction, so we're not retrofitting anything. This has all been designed from the ground up in terms of our environmental conformity and concern. We're also able to do our landscaping to exactly what we needed, because we're starting fresh, we're starting with a blank slate. We take pride in our landscaping, we take pride in Mr. Carwash, we take pride in the product that we give to our community, and we're hoping that with this, we're going to be able to continue to provide to this community for the next 20 years, and hopefully, longer after that. Thank you.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation, appreciate that.
Of course.
Can stand for questions here. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant initially right now?
I just have one quick question, is this similar to your, Mr. Carwash in Brooklyn Park that's just completed off Zane and?
Yes.
Okay. That flowed really well in comparison to your current structure here.
Yeah. No, we prefer doing the new builds a lot more, just because we have a lot more control over the overall design, because our operations team, you know, they've been in the business for, I don't know, a thousand years at this point, seems like it, they know how the customers run, they know what's going to work best. So, we, we took a lot of time to develop our site standard and landscape standard package, because now we have a blank slate, we can really do whatever we want, as long as it fit in the community and city guidelines. So, we know that we are a vehicle-positive and a very dependent business, so we want to make sure that if a vehicle cannot go around our site, we failed as a business. So we want to make sure that the problem that we see now in our existing location, we're not repeating them for any of the newer ones we open up.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you. The current square footage of the existing building, how much, what's the square footage of the existing?
I'm not sure, Luke, do you know?
Forty-two hundred.
About forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mehdi?
Just to make sure I'm clear on, I don't know if we can put up the renderings again, but the canopies that you showed in the renderings, those are, what you're saying are the smaller-scale canopies?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me just head back to that first one. There you go.
So, when the staffer, well, we could maybe ask staff this question, but when the staff report discussed, you know, the canopy and elimination, I wonder if that, you know, what version that was in regard to, but thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, so I'll ask Chairman to clarify that. I have a question myself, maybe two, potentially not directly applicable to your application, but what are you going to do with the existing site?
So, we're going to move operation from that existing site, close that down, and that staff will then move to this new location.
Okay, and then it'll just get sold, you're not going to retain that site?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay, all right. How fast do you serve customers on a, on your busiest day? How many cars per minute does your facility?
To answer that, I'm going to call up Luke Kitley, and he will be able to give you the information you need. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Luke Kitley, the Director of Operations for the Midwest. So, to answer your question, we can wash over 1,000 cars a day, if the site's optimized the way that we need it. You know, some of the pain points that, that hurt us right now, you know, not only is it a 100-foot tunnel in length, so there's very constraint, very big constraints when it comes to chemistry and drying time, we're adding 30 additional feet to this new property, so that definitely helps. We can speed up the conveyor belt process because of that, because we have more room to work with. In addition to that, you know, it's, it's like herding cattle to get people to merge into the same lane, right? And right now, our current site is a right-hand turn. If you can visualize being in your car, it's hard to see the right side of your, of your vehicle. So, this new facility is a left turn in, it's a very gradual turn. You mentioned the, the property on Zane and Brooklyn Park, it's a really good example of seeing very easy flow and merge points, and that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. So, but yeah, we can wash up to about 1,000 cars a day on a big day.
Okay, could you do the math for me and take that down into either cars per minute or cars per hour?
It's about two cars per minute, 120 cars an hour. It's a good average on a busy, busy day, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that's exactly what I was looking for.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have another question.
Commissioner Taylor?
So, we're going, you're going from kind of a water sustainability and recycle from 10% to 50%. Are there current tanks underneath the earth today at the existing site?
There is, yes, sir. They're much smaller, because they're 50, I believe, around 50 years old. So, the ability to recycle depends on how much we can occupy under the ground. It's called sedimentation, so we basically just use gravity to let the solids flow to the bottom of the, the pit surface, and then it goes in a three-stage of clarification process. So, it gets high enough, spills over to the next pond essentially underground, and then it spills over to the third pond, in which case, most of the solids are back in tanks one and two, and so we're pulling that more water, filtered water, back into the process and then reusing it for the, the next car in line. So it's trapped underneath the conveyor belt, if you can picture that, we essentially just use stormwater drain concept and just trap everything to recycle it and reuse it.
Okay. And are there any current chemicals that you need to do special removal of with the waste that's generated?
No, sir, everything is biodegradable that we use, yeah, everything can fall into that trap and, and be collected.
And then my last question, the current tanks at the site, are those going to be removed once you shut down the existing facility, or what's the plans to remove the existing sites underground?
I can't speak directly for that, but typically, when they're decommissioned, they're filled with either concrete or removed, so I would assume that that would be a requirement, one or the other, we've done both.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, do you happen to have all of your application materials on the video this evening, or just that PowerPoint presentation? Okay, so, in our packet.
Chair, I do have some of the drawings that were provided.
Do you?
Yeah.
Would you please find the, that stacking plan, that, I don't know if it was the site circulation plan, I think it was part of the traffic report that showed the queuing? You know which one I'm talking about? The, the, the queuing plan.
Please hold.
Yep, that's fine. I can talk while I hold. The, um, the traffic engineer who wrote a traffic study for you gave a chart of how many trips this use may generate, car trips.
Right.
And they put it in the metric of car trips per hour during peak periods. And he offered recommendations for a weekday afternoon peak and a weekend, a Saturday, peak. Worst case, of course, being a Saturday when everybody wants their car washed on a beautiful sunny day. And so it looks like the maximum peak generated for traffic is 114 cars per hour. Boom.
Yeah, that's pretty much the max, yeah.
And so, luckily for you, you're, that 114 is below your 120 cars per hour that you can push through your facility. So theoretically, you're handling your peak traffic as it's coming through.
Yes, sir.
And that, and that bears to be underscored by the queuing plan that I think the planner is going to put up on the screen here for us right now, thank you. Hopefully, everybody can see that, that someone put together this graphic showing three, this one shows two cars waiting to enter the pay facility, and two at the pay facility, and there's a double lane of, of entrance queuing driveways. And then, I don't know if there was another one or not, Jeremy, for a different day? I think it showed, there you go, another car or two, up to four cars waiting. So, so this kind of is a parallel to the traffic engineer's finding of you being able to handle the capacity on your peak times, which is all good news to us, so thank you for all that.
Yes, sir.
So that got me thinking, I don't think you need two driveway lanes coming in, and the width of one of those two driveway lanes is the same dimension as the setback variance you're asking for on Flying Cloud Drive. So, why don't you just get rid of one of your wide drive-in lanes and move the whole site up, so you can avoid the variance request, because it looks like you can.
I don't want to speak for, for props, but I believe that we would, with the setback, we would lose an entire row of vacuums as well, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? Yeah, and so, right now, we have 18 stalls at our current location, and so we want to at least match that, because one of our biggest congestion points is being able to vacuum in the summer.
Sure.
And I believe with the setback, if I'm remembering correctly, it would, it would impede on that, that outside lane of vacuums.
Yeah, I, I'm not suggesting that you lose any vacuuming stalls, I would just, on a one-for-one, pick up all of those vacuuming stalls and building and move it up the same width that that second lane is wide. So maybe you have a 14-foot-wide lane there or something like that. You could, you could reduce your variance request by most of the variance that you're asking for, if not all.
So I do want to say that this site plan, even though we do have the two queue lanes there, that curved dash line just below the cursor is the 35-foot building setback. So, we did have to move all of our vacuums, which are right above that, we do have structural footings, and that, we didn't want that in the setback, so we had to shift all of that down towards the south, which caused us to then encroach into that building setback.
Sure.
Because I believe, I think we did pose a question to staff at one point, you know, could we shift up the building, so we're out of that setback, and then apply for that variance of the waiver just for the vacuum footings? And I think the comment was made, and Jeremy, please correct me if I'm speaking incorrectly, just in terms of the initial experience, we didn't, one, necessarily want the back of the vacuums to be so close to, I believe it was Prairie Center. So, we had, we took staff recommendation, we went internally with our operations team at HQ, and we decided that, you know, we can add as many row of stacking, like that are going east-west right now, push our vacuum footings out of that building setback, so at least we're not asking for a double waiver or variance. But then, just have the building encroaching that setback for visibility's sake, but then also having enough of a double-lane drive aisle in between both of our vacuum, vacuum lines. And even though we have 28, and we understand that 24 is really the minimum that's recommended, we just know from past history of sites, 24 has been a very, very difficult site, the drive aisle to maneuver.
Sure.
That's kind of the story behind why we didn't shift everything up to the north, get the building out, because we would still initially be asking for a waiver one way or another.
Okay, well, I think our commissioner will talk about that internally, but I appreciate your comments, I personally would think that it would be a, a lighter lift for us if we were to look at a variance along Crystal View Road with vacuum foundations rather than an entire building.
And if that's the case?
But.
Yeah, we can definitely go back to our design team and then bring that up. I'm sure HQ will be happy that, you know, we're applying for variance for a much smaller section, as opposed to half of a building.
Okay, just curious on that whole way that's developed. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, any of the commissioner member comments of the applicant before we move on?
Mr. Chair, I have one more. There was a, a, a note that some significant trees are being removed, I think it's four of the five, I don't know if I'm remembering that right. Anyway, when I was looking at the site plan, there's some pretty large existing trees right on Crystal View near the entrance, that looked like on your site plan could theoretically remain, and maybe just that double queue lane start a little bit later, but it wouldn't affect, you know, entry or anything like that. Do you have any explanation as to why those trees cannot be saved?
We can, we can revisit the site plan, and then we'll also revisit with our landscape architect to see that maybe there is an issue with the way the roots are growing, that we can't get enough of the parking lanes out of it as well. So we'll find that answer out, and then next week, when we are back here for City Council, we'll have an answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that, you may be seated. This is a public hearing, so I would ask anybody who's here this evening, oh, Mr. Bernhardt, yes.
Do you want me to give a brief, a brief report before the public hearing?
I would be great, fine with that, sure, go right ahead.
Okay, just, just briefly, Mr. Carwash is requesting three actions tonight. One is the PUD concept review, PUD district review with the waiver and the site plan approval. The waiver, as mentioned, is from the front yard setback off of Flying Cloud Drive. There's some discrepancy on what the distance is, the, the narrative suggests a 25-foot setback, the, the plan suggests 22, we'll get that cleaned up before we get, get the approval documents. But generally, the, the issue is the same in terms of the impact to the, to the streetscape there. Staff does support the waiver, and there was some discussion earlier in the process in terms of a waiver for an accessory structure versus a waiver for the principal structure. And in this situation, staff felt that the waiver for the principal structure is more appropriate for a couple of reasons. Number one, putting the building in this location here helped screen that internal workings of the car wash, the stacking lanes and the stacking cars, and then also the vacuum operations in that. The, the challenge with this site is it's exposed on three sides, it's, you know, Prairie Center Drive, Crystal View, and Flying Cloud Drive, it's, it's right there in a fishbowl. We try to minimize or mitigate any of the, kind of the negative aspects of, of that kind of activity. We think the plan does a good job in terms of providing that buffer from the building location, but also the landscaping and then the berm lane that was added along Prairie Center Drive does help kind of buffer or screen those, those actions, sort of those activities. Through the, through the design process, we did work very closely with the developer, and the applicant has, is providing some additional easements along Crystal View and Flying Cloud Drive to help accommodate existing, the existing sidewalk that encroaches into private property on Crystal View, and then also the existing trail that encroaches into private property along Flying Cloud Drive. So they're, they're working with, with the city on those aspects. The building does exceed all the minimum requirements from a building design standpoint, in terms of material. More than 75% of each of the facades are of the Class 1 variety. Also note that the accessory buildings are all brick to match the principal structure. So the dumpster enclosure has a roof on it, is required by code, and does, is 100% brick, with the exception of the, of the door. And then the vacuum room, and then the, the room for the point-of-sale attendant, and those are all meet or exceed the, the minimum standard requirements. The one issue still really out there from a discussion standpoint is the canopies, and to Ms. Mehdi's point, much of the project, the, the canopy proposed was one of, was a large, single canopy over the three lanes. The, the more recent version, which the staff report was written based on, was the four smaller canopies, so that does help mitigate a bit the massing concern that we had from a staff perspective. We look at it, though, as, as our, our code speaks to canopies for, for these type of material, or these type of activities, and they should be attached to the building, and that's the, the standard that we've upheld to recent projects, Chick-fil-A is a more recent one. So that's, that's the basis for our comment on that. We did support internally a smaller, or a smaller temporary canopy for use only when necessary, so opposed basically, and then you put a sun, sun shade on that when necessary, not a permanent structure, but we'll look for your feedback on what's proposed here. As I said before, staff is supporting the project with the waiver as proposed here, and stand for any questions.
Thank you, appreciate that staff report, and I appreciate your thoughts on the, on the setback along Prairie Center Drive versus Crystal View Drive. Prairie Center Drive versus Crystal View Drive, weighing the three-sided frontage that this site has. Okay, staff, do you have any questions? Or, I'm sorry, commissioners, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
No.
Not right now? Okay. Good. Well, I think that we'll go to the audience then. This is a public hearing. If anybody is in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, please step forward and give your name. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this point in time.
So, move?
Move back Commissioner Grody. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Public hearing is closed. Okay. So, commissioners, thoughts or findings?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Mehdi.
I don't have a huge concern with the canopies. I think, I, I think minimized is preferred. Really, the main purpose would be protecting the equipment and, and the, the car as you reach out, so you're not getting, sorry, you're not getting wet. So, the, what I use as a basis of looking at the existing canopies, I thought those were kind of the right scale, but just wanted to make that comment that I don't have a huge concern with those. The setback, you know, I questioned that a little bit, looking at it, just really because it's, there's really no other comparison on the street. Everything else on the street is setback very far. In general, I am a proponent of, of, of shorter setbacks in, in these commercial districts, but just kind of looking at the surrounding uses, I didn't want this to stick out like a sore thumb. I'm pretty sad, satisfied with that. I just wanted to make the comment that I was a little bit questioning whether or not I thought that was appropriate. After hearing the explanation tonight, I, I think it's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to put on a tail-end comment to that. I, too, was concerned about the setback in relationship to other sites along Flying Cloud Drive, more so from a retailer's setback equity standpoint. Retailing is all about signage, and taking away one site's visibility by moving another neighboring site forward to block the other building site, I don't think is an equitable thing to do, and retailers depend upon signage visibilities. So, I didn't ask, but I'll ask shortly whether or not they had a neighborhood meeting. I don't think commercial districts are allowed to do that, or required to do that, I should say. But I, I did drive the intersection back and forth a couple of times, and it looks like their next-door neighbor, Wedding Day Diamonds, seems like it has a tower with a sign, and this is a very low site, a low grade, and I think the three-dimensionality of it doesn't detract from signage from their neighboring property. But I think we should be careful not to, not to forget that I think that setback equity is important for retail districts. So, maybe that could be a finding of ours, is that we gave it due consideration and due the uniqueness of this nature, of this site's topography, et cetera, that we don't see it as a problem. But that, that's my opinion, if anybody else agrees or disagrees.
I agree. I think that's an important caveat to the reason why we might approve this waiver. If we do, is, is kind of the unique location of this, elevations, surrounding uses, and we have to think about future surrounding uses. So, if Wedding Day or, or even over on the Chick-fil-A, if that's redeveloped, is this creating an unfair condition? So, I think that's a really good point.
I may also have a comment about those canopies, but I'd like to hear other commissioners' comments on those three small canopies covering the pay lanes. If not, I'll maybe just ask the question back to the applicant. Can I just make the assumption that most people get their car washed in sunny weather without it being raining? So, if you don't get a lot of traffic and inclement weather, do you really need the canopies? I can see it for a fast-food drive-through, but for a car wash, it seems like I wouldn't get my car washed when it's raining.
So, there's many reasons for a canopy, particularly up here. It's the snowfall and getting it onto essentially a screen or, you know, technology. That, that can be problematic if you're not there and it happens overnight, and it's buried in snow. That can be a problem. The other side is really just employee comfort. You know, that is a big part of it. I know it's, you know, not crazy hot summers up here, but we do get a lot of heat, and just to get out of the rays is a big deal. On busy days, to answer your question, our, our peak season is in the winter. It's winter going into spring. And, but, just because of the elements, we, we do build that very expensive CSA kiosk, we call that, or a booth, that's fully air-conditioned, heated, so they can take rotations in and out to get out of the elements. But we always have somebody that's positioned out there to help assist customers that have never been with us before. And if I can note, there's been some questions about the size of the canopies. Just to give you a reference, it would be similar to what we currently operate at our existing site right down the road. If you want to compare size, it's essentially the exact same size. Those are just swing arches, and these are flat, but they're the same size. So, if that helps as a frame of reference for the size of them.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear as to the applicant's graphics that we've looked at versus the staff report comment. Has the design changed? Have you responded already to staff's concern with a different canopy design since the staff report was written? Or, your staff report is a comment to this set of graphics that we're looking at?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. So, you prefer no canopies?
That's staff's position, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. If we approve the project tonight, it's being approved with canopies unless we say something to the contrary.
That is correct.
Thank you. Did you want to add something?
Just in case you have more design-related questions about the canopies, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Commissioner, to the canopies, is, does the canopies have anything to do with branding of the company, or any branding associated with it?
Branding in terms of our colors. And then also, you know, we have the large signs saying, you know, unlimited wash club members, you know, that's something that's very synonymous with Mr. Carwash, that that is what we call our subscriber system, UWC or Unlimited Car Wash. So, that's what, I guess, the branding that we have on there, and not necessarily the Mr. logo itself, but it is synonymous with our brand and our aesthetic that we want to create holistically, not just with the principal structure, but principal and accessory and vacuums and landscaping, all speaking with one another, create a cohesive design.
Commissioner Grody.
Because I have a monthly pass, I'm a little bit familiar with.
Perfect.
What percent of the users actually do have the monthly pass and don't ever interact with the point-of-sale people?
It's, it's roughly in between seventy-five and eighty percent. And so, two out of three of the lanes that are on the drawing would be just for members, and one lane would be to, to handle retail customers.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, if Commissioner Taylor's question about branding turned into a signage thing, how would you differentiate the lane assignments for a guest if we took away your canopies?
That's a good question. We've never had to do that before, so we would not, we would start fresh with the idea.
All of our existing sites, either tenant improvements or the new builds, they all have a canopy structure that, while not only protects the vehicles, the customers, and our employees from the weather, it's just very large signs, unlimited wash club, unlimited wash club, and whatnot. It's similar to what we have at Brooklyn Park at Zane, if you guys will have to go out there again. That in itself, as a customer driving up, it's big, they know exactly where to go. Not having a canopy there will create issues, like Luke was saying, not only on design, but operationally as well. And it might just turn into a circulation issue, similar to what we have at the existing site now, just because no one really knows which one to go to.
Okay. Thank you. Jeremy, can you help us understand what signage limits would be imposed upon the applicant when they go for a sign permit for circular, site circulation directional signage?
Well, as you know, there's, there's wall signage allowed, there's freestanding, you know, monumental type signs, then there's incidental signs, which are intended to provide onsite direction or instruction to users. This is a property Zone C regional commercial, so it's fairly, it's, it's a high-intense residential zoning district, so there's quite a bit of signage allowed comparable to neighboring businesses. I don't know the number off the top of my head of what that limit is, but I know that we did review the incidental signage kind of requirements to make sure that businesses like Mr. Carwash and others that require direction to pick up product or, you know, access through the site could, could use their signage there. In terms of alternatives to a canopy, that could be achieved, you know, from a directional directional signage standpoint, you know, adjacent to the lane, or clearance markers, things like that.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Okay, well, I'd be interested in feedback from other commissioners on those topics, specifically those small canopies over the pay lane accesses or not.
Commissioner, I think I would be more concerned if the location where you can vacuum and park your car dry off more, we're adding canopies there for the customers to kind of be out of that sun, just because of the sheer amount of lanes that you have there. But I'm not overly concerned about the, the canopies of the existing design, my point of view.
Thank you.
I think it, it does add to, I thought it'd add more to the branding as well, but hearing that it is not part of the branding, I, I still think that I'm, I wouldn't be against it.
It's not a part of the branding in terms of just having the Mr. logo there. Like I mentioned earlier, it's part of our branding in terms of when you look at the overall site that Mr. Carwash provides to our customers. We know we're just not the principal structure that gives, you know, you know, not arguable that we get the best washes in the universe, just putting that out there. But it's also because it's the experience of driving into a queuing lane, seeing the employee greeting you as you're driving, whether you are a limited wash club member or not, it doesn't matter. We're going to have someone there with a smiling face. I mean, we just came from a site, you know, where one of the attendants was, you know, I believe she broke her foot, but she was still out there waving everybody that went by, because we're just committed to giving everybody the best experience that we can. Not only in terms of how we run the business, it's how we design everything. So, Commissioner Taylor, that's how I would rephrase that, that it is part of the branding, more on the design side, but not just the very literal, here's a Mr. logo.
All right. Yeah, I think we'll probably have to finish up maybe the canopy thing, but just to maybe expand our discussion just a little bit more, I'm personally satisfied with the building's architecture. I think the used materials is, is fine. I, I like your existing building. I'm really happy to see the circulation going in a, the proper direction, counterclockwise.
We are, too.
Yeah, I'm sure. Spotted that right away, so I think that's going to be an improvement for you right away, and to keep a nice, clean site.
Mr. Commissioner, I think the other thing that stands out, too, is you're, you're improving your recycle of, of waste and water by forty percent. So, I mean, that's from a sustainability standpoint, that's, that's a good positive of this as well.
And our R&amp;D team is working on improving those systems as much as we can. I mean, we would love, you know, one day, hopefully a hundred percent recycled.
Yep.
I know that's possible, but as much water conservation as we can, because we understand car washes use a lot of water, and in this day and age, that's a huge concern. But we don't want to be that industry that says, you know, we don't care about the environment, we're going to do whatever because of profits.
Sure.
It's not the case.
Thank you.
That's four hundred percent.
Yeah. There you go.
There you go.
All right. Do we have any other red light issues that people are struggling with?
Well, just no red light, but does this also, does the redesign come with a detailing section of the business as well, where you can get a personal detail of the, of your vehicle, a detailing?
This would not be an interior service option. It would be just the express exterior, similar to what we have next door. Just an upgrade.
Okay. All right. Okay, so commissioners, let's just finish up on this canopy issue then, because if we have a motion for approval of the project, if we do, and if we just have that be in accordance with the application, then we're going to end up with those three small canopies over the drive lanes, if that's okay by everybody. We're going to have to, you know, acknowledge that. And of course, if we want to follow staff's recommendation, then we would add a condition of our approval to eliminate those small canopies, or if there's another suggestion on how the applicant, applicant should deal with that, we could give him that advice as well. So, is, how are we feeling about it in terms of being agreeable to the canopies as proposed versus following staff's recommendation to deny that part of the application?
I'm comfortable with the canopies. I, I think it's a well-run operation.
Okay?
Thank you.
Commissioner Mehdi, I know you're okay with it. I'm tending to be okay with it as well.
Same. I'm okay with it.
Okay, Commissioner, yep, yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the canopy. My first job was in a car wash, and I'm glad to see a company taking care of their employees and having comfort. So, the canopy provides some comfort for the employee. I'm in favor of that.
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, I think, you know, with all due respect to our, our zoning code, which we are here to enforce.
Yeah.
I think we all have to understand and acknowledge that it's put in place for a reason, and I can appreciate the reason why it's there is to avoid some visual clutter on our sites, especially small sites like this. I do think that this particular site has these, you know, the vacuuming machines with the hoses and the, the tall things. There's a lot of things sprouting up on this site besides just a building. Hopefully, the trees will soften that, but, you know, car wash is kind of gangly with a lot of its things on site, kind of anyway. And I don't want to make it worse, but it seems like these do act as signs directing traffic, in my eye, as much as anything, so I'm okay with it. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to recommend approval for a PUD concept plan review, PUD design review, and waivers and site plan review of a car wash, all on 1.23 acres, as represented in the October nine, 2023 staff report, and based on plans dated September sixth, 2023.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sherwood. Discussion on that? Second from Commissioner Mehdi. Any further discussion? Vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck at city council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We do have a planner's report this evening for building and sustainability update. Jeremy, would you like to take us through that?
Yes, Chair, commissioners. Jen Fears from the engineering department will actually serve as the planner today. I'll get this set up for her, and she'll give a brief update on our sustainability kind of actions. Let me get out of her way here.
Great. Welcome, Jen.
Hello, Chair and Commissioners. Make sure we can get the PowerPoint going here. Okay. Can everybody see?
Yes.
All right. Well, I am here tonight to talk about the sustainable building standard. This is something that the city council approved at their September meeting, and so just kind of giving a informational update about what the policy entails and how it applies to planning projects moving forward. So, a sustainable building standard is a policy that's triggered when there are either financial or land use incentives. They have minimal, minimum sustainability criteria that go beyond our existing state energy code, and they're used for implementation in new construction or significant renovation projects. They're also commonly referred to as green building policies or green building standards. As you are all very aware, currently, we have a As you are all very aware, currently, we have a sustainable features analysis as part of your planning reports. That's included in the development guide that we provide to developers in the community. However, everything suggested in that is a voluntary sustainability initiative. We don't have any way of requiring anything at this point in time, so that's where something like a sustainable building standard comes in and gives us a little bit more authority to actually require some of these features in development. So, one of the reasons we're looking at having this standard really goes back to our Climate Action Plan. Overall, we have a community-wide goal of carbon neutrality by 2050, and then we have some sub-goals in there that I've specifically highlighted because you'll see these themes as we kind of start to go through the Sustainable Building Standard. But sub-goals around net zero new construction, having electricity load met on-site with solar, and this, the increase in adoption of electric vehicles. But right now, buildings are certainly our biggest source of emissions in Eden Prairie. It's about 61% of our total emissions. But the Sustainable Building Standard was actually outlined specifically as an action in our Climate Action Plan, so that's the Adopt a Green Building Policy. But there were other actions outlined in there as well to require new development to heavy EV charging stations, require new construction to be solar-ready, and to support statewide updates to our building energy code. And this is just a peek at our planned emissions reductions. So, like I had mentioned, buildings are about 61% of our emissions in Eden Prairie, travel at 37, and then waste very small at 2%. So, we would not be, we are not the first city in Minnesota to have a Sustainable Building Standard. There are a handful of examples around the metro and throughout the state. St. Paul and St. Louis Park have actually had a version of their standard in place for about 10 years at this point, and St. Louis Park just went through a major overhaul of theirs last summer, I believe it was. Edina, probably our closest neighbor, they've had their policy in place for about two years, I think, at this point. So, the way this works is the Sustainable Building Standard enhances what's already required in our state building code through the use of third-party green rating systems, and then city-specific requirements, and I'll get into that in a second here. So, yeah, like I said, it's made up of those two components, third-party green building rating systems, and then those city-specific requirements. And city-specific is up to each city to decide what's important to them and what they want to have included in that standard. But the third-party rating system, these are used because they're very familiar to architects and engineers. There's a third party that can be responsible for the verification that they're complying with the standard that they've selected, and they all go above and beyond existing building code. So, most of you probably would think of LEED when you think of green building rating systems, and that's certainly the most popular one. However, there is a Minnesota-specific third-party green rating system called B3 Guidelines. That's actually implemented by the Department of Commerce and the University of Minnesota. It's a Minnesota-specific guideline that they've put together, and it's actually required for any buildings that get state bonding money from the state of Minnesota when they build a new development. So, those are the two that we're looking for in commercial or mixed-use applications. Multifamily, those same two options, and then there's a third system called Enterprise Green Communities. And that actually is a system that's been used for quite some time for any multifamily that gets financing through MHFA. So, again, kind of these well-known, used in other applications throughout the state, third-party rating systems. We will offer an option for people to suggest a different third-party rating system, but we need to vet it first to make sure it was kind of meeting the things that we're looking for in our developments, but we're open to that idea as new systems come along. So, one of the questions we got a lot about was, you know, what are the increased costs on projects like this? It's a little hard to narrow down because it depends on, you know, what sort of rank are you looking for in this third-party green rating system? But this is kind of the average depending on the level for LEED, which is, you know, like I said, one of the most popular ones. So, we would require anything that would apply to this policy to be LEED Silver or higher. So, that's roughly two, two-and-a-half percent project price increase. And a lot of that just depends on, you know, how big the building is, their timeline to go through the review process, those sorts of things. So, it can really, and then, you know, as you go up the scale to the platinum, you really start to see that price premium on those applications. So, there is an increased cost for LEED, and we certainly acknowledge that. However, there are also benefits to having a LEED-certified building. You see higher rent rates, see higher resale rates when those buildings do end up going on the market for both the commercial buildings and multifamily buildings. So, there are benefits to the actual property developer, and, you know, what they see is a return on those buildings down the line. But there are also benefits to the people that actually live and work in those buildings. So, this information is from Washington DC. They have a very similar policy in Washington DC, and then similarly to us, they also have an inclusionary housing policy. So, it's a lot of things, obviously, you know, they're a little bigger than Eden Prairie, but those other things do line up. But for apartment buildings, you know, they're seeing 8% reduction in utilities for the tenants that live in these buildings. Overall, almost a 20% reduction in the cost of just overall operating expenses. And then the same on the newer commercial buildings, just with that utility savings from the green improvements that are part of that LEED certification. I will pause there. Any questions about the third-party rating systems before we move into the city-specific? So, city-specific, it applies to a project regardless of whichever rating system they select to move forward with, and they're really designed to make sure that the city's sustainability priorities are met. However, it is up to us to figure out how we're going to determine whether or not they've met that standard. So, for Eden Prairie's policy, for the city-specific requirements, we are asking for predicted greenhouse gas emissions, to have electric vehicle charging capability, and then built-in solar capability. And so, you know, kind of tying back to those goals that we had in our Climate Action Plan around electric vehicle charging and solar capability, that's where you start to see those pop up into the city-specific requirements. And I'll talk a little bit about why in a second. But predicted greenhouse gas emissions, that just helps us figure out, okay, what kind of impact is this building going to have on our emissions as we're, you know, making plans to reduce our overall emissions by 2050? So, EV charging capability. We really have three options on this. For whatever reason, my notes aren't appearing here, so I want to make sure I get this right. But we're requiring either full-on EV-installed, EV-ready, or EV-capable. And so, there's slight differences between EV-capable and EV-ready, but EV-capable is basically making sure that the buildings have electrical panel capacity and space for branch circuit, as well as the raceways installed during construction. So, it's easier to add EV-charging capacity down the road. EV-ready just means we've put in the branch circuit, we have the wiring to the space, we have a receptacle at the space. No. And then EV-installed is just very straightforward. There's an EV charger there, ready to go, level-two charging. So, the standard, the city-specific standard is different depending on the type of land use that we're seeing. So, for one-to-four-family unit dwellings, we just ask that there's one EV-ready, essentially an outlet in the garage, ready to support EV-charging. Multifamily residential, it's a little more robust, and that's something that is intentional because 80 to 90% of EV-charging happens at home. So, if people don't have access to charging where they live, it makes it a lot harder for them to commit to buying an electric vehicle. We're certainly seeing more and more multifamily applications, as you know, as they come through. They've seemed more and more willing to just put in those EV-charging, or at least the EV-ready standards upfront. So, we think this is in line with what we're going to be seeing in the future. And then just ensuring that there are some charging capabilities at commercial or office and industrial locations. Commercial, you know, it's a little bit less. Those are places where, you know, maybe you pop in for like an hour. You're not going to get a ton of charge on a level-two in that time, but it is a little bit higher for office locations because those are locations where people leave their cars for eight hours a day. So, you have a little more opportunity. And for somebody that, you know, maybe lives in a different city or lives somewhere where they don't have EV-charging access at home, but they have it at work, that might be enough to, you know, tip them over into purchasing an electric vehicle.
Jen, I have a question on this slide. A one-to-four-family dwelling versus multifamily residential. So, take the example, our recent townhome development we approved. There were multiple buildings of four-unit townhomes. Would that be considered like a four-family dwelling? Or would that apply to the entire development as a multifamily?
It'd be a four-family dwelling, so that kind of thing where everybody has their own individual garage. That's where you just want to make sure there's an outlet in there, so they're, have that access in their own garage. Multifamily residential is meant for where there's just a big shared parking area, like an underground parking, parking ramp, that kind of thing. May or may not be assigned charging, but it's not, it's shared space, less than personal space.
And for commercial use, and we'll take example of the Mr. Carwash, let's say you have a smaller commercial user with 20 stalls, is 1% round up to one minimum?
Yes. Yes, exactly. We do have a couple of allowances in there, so if somebody, you know, wanted to put in a DC fast charger instead of level-two, we can allow substitution on that. That's something that we actually expect some of the office locations might be interested in, because if it's a fast charger, they'll fill their car and then have to move it, whereas if it's a level-two, the same car will sit there all day and only one employee can use it. So, just, you know, sharing that access around a little bit. And then we did nursing homes, assisted living, memory care, you know, which kind of typically would be considered a multifamily residential setting. But people most likely are not having nearly as many vehicles in these settings, just being sensitive to, you know, some of the costs already involved with that kind of housing stock. That, we just had the one accessible EV charger for visitors, staff, or if there happens to be a resident there, that kind of thing. And travel emissions are important. You know, right now, they're about 40% of our emissions in Eden Prairie, but as the grid gets cleaner and more of the electricity used in our buildings comes from renewable sources, travel will eventually bump up and be the biggest emitter in Eden Prairie. And almost the entirety of all of our travel-related emissions reduction plans are around access to electric vehicles. I think there's about 14% that's mode shift, so light rail transit, walk, bike, PED, that kind of thing. But the vast majority is planned around EV access. And so, the reason we added the EV as a city-specific requirement, the requirements around EV-charging are not consistent across the third-party rating systems. And LEED and green communities specifically, it's not a required element. It's something where you can get points, you know, they go towards a points total, and if they meet their points total in other ways, they would still, you know, meet their LEED requirements but not provide that EV access. So, that's why we added it above and beyond the third-party rating system. And then solar energy. So, at a minimum, and this is something I know you hear a lot in your planning applications, is building to that solar-ready standard, so just making sure that the layout of the roof and the capacity it can hold is suitable to solar down the road. And then we're going to ask them to look at sourcing up to 5% of their expected energy use onsite and have them install it if it's cost-effective with a 15-year payback. All of the energy uses in buildings, you know, it could be a relatively small building with a high energy use, so they might not meet that threshold. If it's a larger building with tons of roof access for solar and, you know, maybe not very much energy use, they shouldn't have a huge problem meeting that standard. So, we're asking them to at least look at it. If they don't, and just a simple payback is all we're looking for on this, and they'll have to show us, you know, kind of what their proposals were on this. But at a minimum, having that solar-ready standard, even if they don't install solar, they might down the road as prices improve, or the next owner of that building would be a step ahead. And adding this as a city-specific standard, same reason as the EVs, it's just not entirely consistent across the third-party rating system, particularly in LEED and green communities. It's a point system, so they wouldn't necessarily have to do that. So, to meet our Climate Action Plan goals, having that included just made sense. So, the triggers for the Sustainable Building Standard. Any new construction over 2,000 square feet or more that is requesting a financial or land use incentive. Any major addition over 10,000 square feet, same, requesting that financial or land use incentive. Any other projects, we wouldn't be able to apply this to. So, financial incentives, most commonly, probably in Eden Prairie, would be tax increment financing, but there are some other financial incentives that would apply if requested. And then land use incentive would be considered a PUD zoning status. There is one exemption in there. If they only ask for a density waiver, the standard wouldn't apply. Just kind of due to the way our codes put together, it made sense to leave that as an exemption. From what I understand, you almost never see only a density waiver. There's some other waiver on top of it, so it shouldn't come up too often.
Jen, if I can speak in here real quick. You will see in our review of Chapter 11 in a couple of weeks some minor changes to reflect this issue, because as Jen says, most of our planned unit development projects are multiple waivers. With the exception in our TOD, in our Town Center Zoning District, you can only develop in those districts through a PUD. So, we're modifying that section of the code so it's not a requirement to help address this issue here, because the intent is to capture some of those benefits for those projects that are asking for city assistance, whether it's financial or land use changes. So, you'll see some more of this coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Can I ask you a question on that? Just taking today's example, their variance was not a density variance, it was a setback variance. So, would that trigger this requirement?
Yes, because the building also was larger than 2,000 square feet.
Thanks.
I've got a question for you. You've got some fairly aggressive decade-long goals, longer term. So, how many of these threshold objections, objectives do you think will be modified how quickly? how quickly?
That's a good question. You know, we're only a couple of years in to our tracking on the climate action plan. I actually think we're probably going to be pretty close on the EV one, on our expectations by 2030, just the way things are going, for sure. So, implementation, the council adopted the standard on September 19th, and we'll have it in place for new developments starting January 1st. One thing I did want to mention, we have a contract with LHB, a local architecture firm, to provide support to applicants as they implement the standard, if they have a project that triggers it. So, they would help participate in an initial meeting with the applicant, kind of outline what the standard requires and how we'll go about verifying that. And then, they're also available to help the applicant, I think, up to three or four times throughout the course of their application, if they have questions or are looking for advice on how to put something together to best meet the standard. That's something that the city's going to provide to support applicants as they implement the standard. And I think that's it. Any questions?
This is terrific. Thank you, Jen. Good presentation, and I, for one, am very excited to have this in place for the remaining development in Eden Prairie. So, I'm understanding this sustainable building standard will become codified as part of our ordinance. Is that correct?
The sustainable building policy will be effective January 1st. I don't believe any further council action is necessary at this point. It just, it's pending until January 1st. At which time, it will become effective.
I couldn't maybe clarify that a little bit. So, it wouldn't be updated into the zoning code?
It would not be.
No. It's a city policy, which is a separate process that still has, you know, the full weight and authority of the city council, just not making it a zoning code amendment.
Okay, okay. You had mentioned that you would put some language in Chapter 11, maybe some pointers pointing from the code to the policy, then? Did I hear that right?
No, maybe I misspoke there. We're going to modify some sections of the zoning code that reference requirements for a planned unit development. We don't want to require every project to have a PUD, a planned unit development, so we're modifying that. That language isn't in our zoning code that requires your action before we can make those changes. As Jen said, this policy is not in the zoning code, so it did not require planning commission action.
Okay. So, what I heard is that to be subject to this policy, you need to have a benefit of some incentive assistance. And so, that sounded to me like, from both of you, that was an important trigger. Is that prohibiting us from extending this to every application?
Yes. Yep, that's exactly right. So, anybody that asks for a financial incentive or the land-use incentive, the city has the authority to require these standards that are, you know, above and beyond our existing building energy codes, because we're giving them that incentive for their development. In situations where they don't have any incentive, it's just, this is our project, you know, they're not asking for a PUD or anything else, we don't have the authority to exceed the state energy code.
Okay. So, therefore, could we, or maybe you've thought about it already, to have a sustainable building standard light that would be part of or an enhancement of our design standards guide?
So, I think the way that we've looked at it, almost everything that comes through at this point is either asking for a financial or land-use incentive. And I know Julie and I ran the numbers on your planning applications, and there were only a handful that fell through the cracks that wouldn't have it applied to. But to answer your question, yes, we would just continue to ask for those same things I ask for right now in those planning commission reviews, just without the authority to actually enforce them.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
So, this was a bit, like, I had not, I was not familiar with the study on this, and then that this went through city council, so it was pretty shocking when I saw this. Personally, from a development perspective, where I work in, I've not seen this aggressive of a policy in any city ever. So, I was surprised. I think this is a very, very aggressive policy and puts a lot of costs onto anyone who wants to do business in Eden Prairie. I see there was some mention of cost studies there, but there's a lot more than just construction costs that get added, just hiring consultants to even get certified under these programs is actually pretty onerous. It could be tens of thousands just to hire someone to get that lead, to get that green buildings. You can't just do it yourself, send in a little application. It requires a whole consultant team, and there's companies out there that provide those services. But it's a big added cost for smaller developments. I think some larger developments, it's not, it's not going to, you know, they end up maybe facing some of these for other reasons. But I was curious, you had mentioned some other cities on there. Did you, how does this compare with some of the other cities' policies? I'm curious now to look them up, but I have not heard anybody requiring not only to get certified by a program, which is a pretty strong level of meeting sustainability standards, but then having those extra policies on top of that. I know some cities are talking, maybe individually, about things like the EV stalls and whatnot. But how, do you have any kind of study as to how this compares to other cities?
Yeah. Hang on one second here. I... Let's see here. But, oh, you don't want to see that. But I do have a slide in here. I tried to edit it down a little bit because I knew we were going to be towards the tail end here. Why did it? There we go. So, I think this is what you're asking for, Commissioner, kind of comparison to some of the other cities that have a similar policy. So, Eden Prairie, Edina, and St. Louis Park all have that financial or land-use incentive trigger. They all have, and this isn't included on this slide because it's more looking at the city-specific requirements, but they all have those same requirements for meeting third-party verification rating system. It's kind of a simple breakdown on what Edina and St. Louis Parks EV charging looks like. I know St. Paul has a ordinance at their planning commission right now for multifamily EV access that I think is 5% installed, 50% EV-ready. So, that's very comparable to what we have in our policy. And then, most of the cities minus Edina have that renewable energy standard with that same, you know, build to a solar-ready standard and install if cost feasible.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just stick with my comment, I guess, to our group as we see projects starting to come in, that this is not a small feat. It's a pretty large feat for them to meet. So, I think we should, you know, that's, this is going from zero to 60, basically, real quick.
Certainly, as it depends upon the size of the project. Your initial question about would the project in front of us tonight trigger that? The answer was yes. For a small building like that, it would be, on a percentage basis, a much higher hit.
Yes. It's most onerous to the smaller projects, which I think is where I have some concern about that and about how that might deter some projects from happening. And, you know, you think of even using the Car Wash specifically. That's a very specific use. I don't know how our Car Wash gets LEED-certified, or if that's a thing, but that in itself is, would be an interesting, interesting one to bring through.
Yeah, yeah.
I do have one last thing that I didn't mention. So, there is a mechanism in the standard where developers can ask for either modification or removal of the sustainable building standard, and that ultimately would have to be either approved or disapproved by the city council. So, we do have some off-ramps in those cases where, you know, they can kind of prove the burden on that, if that helps answer your question a little bit.
Sure, sure. I mean, I can, we can kind of see that car wreck coming with someone coming in with an affordable housing project, looking to build something inexpensively so that they could target a lower-income bracket market, only to be faced with these additional costs and...
Well, and Jen mentioned, if you're doing a light, like a tax credit affordable project, you're meeting the green communities in some of these anyway. But if someone's trying to do a naturally occurring, more affordable housing project without state funding, then this would be an added cost, for sure.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. That all said, I think the urgency of our planet's climate is something that's obvious in front of all of us, and I appreciate the city's initiative to put forward this strong initiative to promote sustainability. I think it's terrific. I appreciate your leadership on that. My only question was going to be if, because I know how the LEED process works, we've had to come through a number of times on our project, and you get commissioned at the very end, and you get your score. So, building's built, scorecard comes out, and you fail maybe three points out of 48 or something like that. Or, in the case of silver versus certified, you go for 31, 32, and you end up with 29, and all of a sudden, you know, you're not there. So, what happens then?
Yeah. So, we're going to, with LHB, develop kind of a verification process where we'll make decisions about, really, that kind of scenario. What happens if, you know, they have all intentions and then they don't ultimately meet it? I don't know what that might look like at this point. I guess it's possible that we could look at some sort of, you know, financial penalty, perhaps, or, you know, some other way of kind of making sure that they actually move forward with what they're asking them to do, but that we all have to work out and ultimately probably get. If there's any sort of financial penalty to that side of it, we'd have to get authorization from the city council.
Okay.
I would guess it would be a very case-by-case basis.
All right, all right. Is the city fully funding the consultant's fees to meet with the applicant? It's not passed on as a development fee during the permitting process? We're funding that, okay. All right. So, and that's fine, that consultant chosen is the best. So, that could morph potentially into maybe a program where an equivalency checklist could be established in lieu of them going through the sometimes cost deterrent, challenging process of going through B3 or, of course, LEED, especially in having our own checklist similar to it or identical to it, but instead monitored locally.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. It's interesting, talking to my counterparts in Edina and St. Louis Park. St. Louis Park mainly sees people that select B3, and Edina has only seen people select LEED. And I don't, yeah, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason as to why those differences are. So, I am curious to see kind of what the preferred pathway is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? Okay, well, thank you again.
Yeah, we'll see you in January.
Yeah, absolutely. Very informative. No actions necessary on this planner's report, so...
Sure.
And any other comments that you've heard, fine, but that's all. So, thank you, Jen. Moving on then, do we have any members' reports? None? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion to the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.